Call your attention to the big screen there. Each year, our fourth graders take part in the State Fire Chiefs poster contest. And this year, Rachel's, Representative Austin. The posters are being judged at the state level, and I'm pleased to announce that Rachel took first place for the fourth grade contest. Rachel ended up having a poster in the Minnesota State Fire Chiefs magazine, ribbon, a nice little award, and we were able to get her in front of her classmates at school and present it to her. So I'd like to say congratulations to Rachel.
Rachel, can I ask you a little bit to explain that just a little bit, or what inspired you to do that? Do you want to get up, or do you want to just sit down? It's just, everybody thinks it's neat, you know? Just tell us a little bit about it.
I thought it was important that you have to get out when there's a fire, and you have to get out quick.
You do, that's for sure. I used to think that was baloney until my house burnt down. We had to get out quick, trust me. So that's a, thank you, you did a very good job, we're all proud of you for that. And I understand your brother's a previous winner, is that true? What's your brother's name?
Brandon.
Hey, Brandon, boy, he must have given you a few tips on how to do it. Well, thank you, you did a good job, you made us proud, so thank you very much.
Nice work.
Nice work. Okay, now we move on to number four, is a motion for the consent agenda. And Mr. and Ms., yeah, you don't have to sit around for the rest of your kids, they'll be very bored. Give him another 12, his name might like it, but right now it's boring. Sometimes we're a bit bored.
Thank you.
Okay, number four is a motion for the consent agenda. I don't believe there's any changes, so we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold, number five on a public hearing. Five is a public hearing on street improvement assessments for 19th Street Northeast, Oakland Avenue East to 8th Avenue Northeast, project 18102. The amount to be assessed is $170,000, $170,315.25 at 4.75% interest for 15 years. Stephen?
The, I'll give a little bit of background information on the next four items. We sent out 224 assessments to residents on our street projects for 2018, so we're impacting about, like, with that, 224 properties. Our estimated cost for our street reconstruction-related work is $3,250,000. And those broken up are into assessments, which we are assessing about 22% of that, or $712,000. We have $1.3 million coming from state aid funds or the gas tax. And then our main goal is about $1.3 million, which would come from Fund 49 or the tax levy. So that's how we've broken up our costs for 2018 street projects. And again, what we're talking about here tonight is our assessments, again, which make up about 22% of that total overall construction cost for street-related work. As it relates to the project that you just described on 19th Street Northeast, Mitch, our Assistant City Engineer, at our last meeting, went over these handouts and the full details about the project, so I won't do that all again, but I did want to highlight a couple of the slides, mainly for our 19th Street Northeast. It would be, the project is broken down into $1.3 million for street improvements, we have $200,000 for sanitary sewer improvements, we have $200,000 for storm sewer improvements, for a total project of $1.7 million. And of that, we are assessing $170,315 to the adjacent property owners. We have set assessment rates that would apply for any project throughout the community. Those set assessment rates for residential street reconstruction is $45.25 per front foot. And we also have set assessment rates for sidewalk as well, sidewalk that would be replaced. We don't replace everyone's, we don't replace all of the sidewalk adjacent to someone's property, we only replace what we determine is a trip hazard or a bad sidewalk for using ADA criteria for that. When a project is assessed, there are four assessment options. Number one is, we will likely send out bills for these assessments in the fall, late August or early September. When a homeowner receives that assessment, they have four options. They could pay it in full prior to October 31st of 2018 without interest. Option number two is they could pay at least 50%, and the remainder goes on their taxes, spread out over 15 years with interest. Option three, when they receive that bill, is they could do nothing, and it automatically goes on their taxes, spread out over 15, the full amount goes on their taxes, spread out over 15 years with interest. And both of those options, if it goes on their taxes, they would foresee it in the spring of 2019. And then finally, option number four is if they meet certain age and income guidelines, they could have it deferred on their taxes with interest. But again, they would need to meet those different age and income guidelines, and that program is overseen by our Finance Department with Mr. Dankert. When assessments go on their taxes, it is spread out, again, for 15 years with an interest rate of 4.75%. So I've already sent the background information for this project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council of the public might have.
Okay, so we'll take these one at a time, right?
Correct.
And the first one is going to be number five, that's going to be the public hearing on street improvements for 19th Street Northeast, Oakland Avenue East to 8th Avenue Northeast. Were there any written objections?
No, I did not receive any written objections on this project.
Okay. Resolution declaring the cost, you've done it already, right?
No, that will be your next item, item D.
Okay.
Public hearing, Your Honor.
Public hearing. Is there anybody here tonight that wishes to address the council on this particular street project? Okay, and we need a resolution declaring the cost, then.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert. What are you looking for in there, Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Finally, 5E, we need a resolution adopting the assessment rule.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number six is a public hearing on street improvement assessment for 5th Street Northwest, 8th Avenue Northwest to 12th Avenue Northwest, and 12th Avenue Northwest, 5th Street Northwest to 10th Street Northwest, project 18103. The amount to be assessed is $233,131.98 at 4.75% interest for 15 years. Now, Stephen? Presentation of the project and associated assessments.
Yes, just trying to find the backup for that one. Everything is, everything is the same. Oh, excuse me, I was looking at the wrong one on my agenda, sorry about that. We are on item number six for 5th Street Northwest and 12th Avenue Northwest, all right. Everything that I just described with the previous project is all the same for this one, except I want to just highlight the costs for this project, which are different. In this case, with these two roadways, we've, we're expecting a street improvement cost of $800,000, sanitary sewer improvements of $235,000, storm sewer improvements of $90,000, for a total project cost of $1,125,000 for this project. And we are planning to assess $233,000 of that cost to our adjacent property owners. Again, all the assessment options are the same for this project with the same interest rate.
Okay, were there any written objections? Stephen, isn't?
I'm sorry, there were no written objections on this project.
So is there anybody in the audience who wants to address the council on that you're supposed to? If you haven't filed a written objection, this is the last day you can do that, and you're supposed to have done that already, but we'll still let you address the council. If there's nobody, we need a resolution declaring the cost.
So moved the resolution. Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
And E, we need a resolution adopting the assessment rule.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number seven is public hearing on street improvement assessment for 14th Avenue Southwest, 4th Street Southwest to 8th Street Southwest and 15th Avenue Southwest, 4th Street to 6th Street Southwest, project 18104. The amount to be assessed is $151,607, $155,607.48 at 4.75% interest for 15 years. Mr. Lang.
Yes, again, all those assessment options are the same for this project, we apply those throughout any project in the community. This project, just to touch on the construction costs, we have street improvements of $525,000, we have our sanitary sewer improvements of $100,000, and storm sewer improvements of $90,000, for a total project cost of $715,000. And as you indicated, a portion of that to be assessed is $155,607.48.
Thank you. Did we receive any written objections?
We did not receive any on this project.
Is there anybody here that wishes to address the council on this project? I think somebody did at the last meeting a little bit, but if there's anybody else here, whether, no. Otherwise, we need a resolution declaring the cost.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
And E, we need a resolution adopting the assessment rule.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. And our final public hearing, number eight is a public hearing on street improvement assessments for 5th Street Southeast, 13th Avenue Southeast to Dead End, 7th Street Southeast, 13th Avenue Southwest to 16th Avenue Southeast, 8th Drive Southeast, 15th Avenue Southeast to 16th Avenue Southeast, and 15th Avenue Southeast, 6th Street to 8th Drive Southeast, project 18106. Amount to be assessed is $154,685.48 at 4.75% interest for 15 years. Mr. Lang.
The area that you described is done by Woodson School, this is actually phase two of a project that we started here in 2017. Work will be continuing into 2018 with estimated cost for street improvements of $625,000, sanitary sewer improvements of $220,000, and storm sewer improvements of $50,000, for a total project cost of $895,000. And again, as you mentioned, assessment amount for this project will be $154,685.48.
Were there any written objections?
Yes, we did receive one written objection on this project. That objection came from Mr. Jeremy Carron at the address of 1504 7th Street Southeast.
Okay, anybody else here tonight that wishes to address the council on this project? If not, we need a motion to adjourn and continue the hearing for those properties for which written objections to the assessment have been filed.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We need a resolution declaring the cost.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
All in favor? Er, no, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Finally, E is a resolution declare, resolution adopting the assessment rule.
So moved.
Second.
Second? All in favor, or Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Not their final public hearing, and a bid opening and award, number nine is a motion receiving bids for North Main Street Flood Control Project Phase One. Stephen?
I just want to note for you, if you could change that to a resolution with your decision for this project, that would be great for item number nine. This project is our, as you described, our North Main Flood Control Project Phase One, it's the last phase of our 12-phase North Main Flood Project, so that is a great thing for us, to be at that level or at that phase, it's been a long time coming, with projects in 2008, 2011, 2014, and now the final phase planned for this year in 2018. This project would mainly consist of a flood levy from the library around the former downtown power plant and connecting it 4th Avenue Northwest, just right outside of City Hall here. We took bids on the project and had a little bidder of Yuland Brothers, they were the little bidder, $1,682,739.63. We did have two bidders on the project, and that was below our estimate. This project will be funded with a DNR grant and also local option sales tax. So the, my background, awarding the bid to Yuland Brothers contingent upon execution of a DNR grant, but I did also provide a little bit more information for you on the second page of the handout, showing the proposed location of the levy and different items that would be included with that. There will be a levy to protect the area from flooding impact, there will also be storm sewer that will be included as part of the project to drain water from the site. Also included will be a trough that will run along the top of the levy from the existing bridge that crosses over the Cedar River and will carry pedestrian traffic to 4th Avenue. And then the area highlighted in orange is a section of 4th Avenue that will be closed and removed as part of the project, mainly for storm sewer construction, we're constructing some large storm sewer there in 4th Avenue, and we're outletting that storm sewer on the downstream side of the dam. So those are some of the key components of the project, and again, we would recommend awarding this project to Yuland Brothers contingent upon the execution of the DNR grant.
Counsel, any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution for nine.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now, under petitions and requests, then is a resolution approving a brewer, taproom, and small brewer off sale license for Gravity Storm Brewery. Ms. Cazell.
Yes, this is my second brewery, we've had a license request for it in the last year, so they went through and completed all their application with us, so we request the approval. They're also currently working on getting their state license and hoping to open up very soon.
Okay, counsel, any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution for 10.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 11 is a resolution approving a contract with Keiker Brothers for roof replacement at City Hall. Mr. Dankert.
We took bids at City Hall for replacing the roof over the existing parking wreck office, the main hallway, and actually the north end of where we recently moved into because of some water leakage and damage we've had. We'd recommend the fully adhered bid from Keiker Brothers for $40,101 that would come out of the building fund.
Do we know when the last time that was worked out?
I believe it was done, from some research we have, early to mid 1990s.
Okay.
We hadn't had really any leaks in it until this year.
It's a flat, right, up there?
It's a flat roof, yep.
They're notorious for leaking in Minnesota. Anyway, counsel, anybody, any comments, questions? If not, we need a resolution for 11.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 12 is a resolution approving a contract with Fox Electric for lighting replacement at City Hall.
As part of our sustainability efforts and as a result of some of the water damage that has done some damage to the tiles and the light up there, we've looked at using the building fund to additionally add the LED lighting to the parking wreck office area and the first floor main area as part of the project. We received two bids, one from Fox Electric, and that's, and one from Kestner Electric, we'd recommend Fox Electric for $12,500.
Thank you. Counsel, comments, questions? If not, we need a resolution for 12.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 13 is a resolution approving 2017 budget carryovers. We do this all the time, but go ahead, Tom.
It's that time of the year where we've closed out the prior year, and there are certain items that individuals were not able to expend as part of the budget process in 2017. So in order for them to be allowed to do that in 18, statutorily, we need counsel to amend the budget to carry those dollars forward so that they can be used in the 2018 year. I worked with the different departments to come up with the list of items that had been partially expended or unexpended throughout the general fund, the capital improvement revolving fund, port authority, the risk management fund. So as the resolution indicates, we'd request counsel authorize budget adjustment number one, which would then allow department heads to spend those dollars in 2018 on projects you approved in 2017.
Counsel? If there's nothing, we need a resolution for 13.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 14 is a resolution accepting a state hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant. Chief?
Your Honor, this grant is administered to the Board of Firefighter Training and is awarded based on first come, first served. I asked for and was awarded $2,600 for confined space awareness class and hands-on, and a hazmat ops class also. Recommend approval of this grant.
Counsel?
Sounds good. So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 15 is a resolution approving an agreement for ice resurfacing advertisements.
We recently purchased an ice resurfacer at Riverside Arena, and our previous resurfacer, there was an agreement with Hormel Foods for advertising on that old resurfacer, so we approached Hormel and asked them if they would be interested in advertising on our new ice resurfacer. And we worked with them to develop an agreement, as shown in your packet. Some of the key terms of that agreement are that it would be 16 months, beginning May 1st, 2018, and running through April 30th of 2023. The rate for advertising would be $4,000 per year. And some of the conditions outlined in the agreement are that Hormel will provide the advertising wrap, Hormel is responsible for all maintenance, repair, and replacement of the advertisement, the advertisement shall not interfere with operations of the machine, and the advertisement shall not be offensive or political in nature. And if you, in the back of your handout, there is a photo showing what the previous ice resurfacer had for advertising, and then the bottom photo showing the red, the new ice resurfacer that we have now that they will develop some advertising for. With that, I would recommend approval of the agreement.
Counsel? If there's nothing, we need a resolution for 15.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 16 is an ordinance reviewing a rezoning request for Kathy, for Steve and Kathy Soli.
Yeah, I just wanted to put up the map on the screens to orient you to where this property is located. It's on 10th Drive Southeast, it's the current location of Midtown Towing, and the owners of that property have also added a kennel to that property, which was what drove their desire to rezone the property. It's actually currently zoned R1 residential, which was what was the zoning designation when it was annexed in. It's been actually Midtown Towing prior to that R1 designation, so it was a nonconforming use at this point, it is a nonconforming use. During the March 13th, 2018, meeting of the Austin Planning Commission, the commission reviewed this request from Kathy and Steve Soli regarding the business at 1400 10th Drive Southeast. The petitioners are requesting that this property be rezoned from R1 single family to an I1 light industrial district. The surrounding properties, where that pink dashed line is the city limits, although the three parcels to the south, the third one kind of shaped like half an arrow, was recently annexed into the city as light industrial. The area that remains in the county to the south is zoned business, and the area to the east is zoned industrial. The planning commission, after reviewing the request, voted eight to zero in favor of approving the rezone request. of approving the rezone request. The findings that the planning commission made are as follows. The proposed land use change is consistent with our comprehensive future land use map. The use is compatible with the surrounding uses and zoning, and that no significant impacts are anticipated with regard to the existing infrastructure and surrounding environment. And if you want me to go into greater detail about what uses are permitted in a light industrial, I can do so.
Anybody here want that? Okay. If not, counsel, do you have any questions or additions or comments?
So this just changes that one property, everything else stays R1 around them?
Yes. Yes, it does. When the area was annexed in, the whole area was rezoned as R1 or came in as R1, and we kind of leave it to the individual properties to bring that rezone request forward on a case-by-case basis. But, you know, in the future, if we wanted to look at, you know, rezoning a whole area, we could, we could do that. We'd just work with the property owners versus doing it on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions? If not, we need a motion for preparation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And B, we need an ordinance.
Move for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seventeen is a motion appointing Sean O'Connor to the Sustainability Task Force, term ending December 31st, 2020. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eighteen, A and B are two resolutions approving a contract with the Cooperative Purchasing Connection. Kim, we'll start with that.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. When we did our Hormel Foundation grants, we received one for Riverside Arena for the replacement of the scoreboard and video. So we have been researching that and have met with AIM Electronics. They currently fix our scoreboards we have, and we would like the council to agree to have the purchase come through their cooperative purchasing connections. It's similar to state programming as we have done on other, like, lights and things like that.
Okay. Counsel, any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution for eighteen A.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
And eighteen, be approving the purchase of a scoreboard and video display with AIM Electronics. Kim?
So we would go through AIM, through this purchasing contract, not to exceed our grant amount, of course.
Okay. If there's no questions, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nineteen is two motions granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at A, 1406 4th Street Southeast to Hanson Property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B is 908 11th Avenue Southwest, the scatable property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Citizens addressing the council, I just got to say, Steve, you've been an excellent audience for us tonight. Do you have any questions? Reporters, you got any questions? All right. Or anything you want to say. If not, we'll move on to reports and recommendations. We'll start with Paul tonight.
I've got nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Yeah?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Yep. I have nothing, Your Honor.
Steve? Nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
I just want to mention that Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee has been working really hard to bring the Vietnam traveling wall here in May out to the fairgrounds. And so we've been now meeting like every two weeks to try to get everything pulled together, but we've had a lot of support from service clubs and businesses to help us bring this wall here. We are looking for volunteers to help man, we have to man it 24/7, and so we're talking like four-hour shifts, and we are looking for volunteers to help with that. And if anyone wants to volunteer, they can get ahold of anyone on the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee, which AM and I are both on, so. Anyway, we're really excited. It's just been something really great to work for.
Question, how big is this wall?
It's 80% the size of the wall in Washington, DC. It's huge.
And it's got all the names on it, too?
Yes, there'll be computer stations, so if you wanted to look up for a particular name.
Okay.
It would tell you which column and row it's on, so you don't have to walk along with those things. You can if you want. We're going to be having some of the historical society buildings open that will have some Vietnam-era paraphernalia and stuff in it. And so far, we've got like 1,000 school-aged kids being bussed in on Friday, right, and Thursday. So, and then Discover Austin has been really promoting it, and we are going to have a lot of tour buses coming in.
That's good.
Judy, you said that volunteers are needed, but how do they contact the Yellow Ribbon Project? Is there a link on the website? Or how do they?
We do have a website, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Austin, on Facebook.
Okay.
And there, we have phone numbers that you can call. Wayne Mattson is actually in charge of the volunteers.
And he's at the county?
Yes, and I don't have his number on hand.
Well, people can look for him here.
Yeah. I have it, but I don't have time to get it.
There'll be ads starting in the shopper mid-April that will also have the phone number for volunteers, too.
Thanks, Judy. That's a really good project. Vietnam, one of our forgotten veterans. All right, Craig, do we have any reports?
Holly has one.
Holly.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that the city of Austin and Mar County shared a booth at the Home Vacation Show this weekend, and I'm not sure what the total attendance was, but we had approximately 400 people actually stop at our booth. We, on the city side, we shared information about our nuisance complaints, building permits, the homeownership fund, the parking wreck's online registration, summer job openings, fire, part-time fire job openings, and people seemed to be really excited about a lot of the information available. And we did seem to get rid of a lot of maps, too. People still like maps, apparently, so that was a good event, I think.
Excellent. Anything else, Craig?
No, sir.
That is, is there anybody has anything else? Pick up now, otherwise we need a motion.
I just saw something about a work fair for summer jobs in the Chamber newsletter. When is that? Do you know? Can?
It's more like high school.
Okay.
I don't have it. I don't know if they're going to that.
Okay. I just, I just noticed it in recent mailing by the Chambers, so they would know as well. So there's a summer job here.
Okay. All right, then we need a motion to adjourn to Monday, April 2nd, 2018, at 5:30, Council Chambers.
So moved.
Is there a second? On favor?
Aye.
We'll take a short break and meet across the hall.